Yes.
Mr. Schiefer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
That will turn it over to Mr. Schiefer.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have a special group of students that are being recognized for their artwork that's being displayed in the board office here. These are students that actually created this artwork in the spring of last year and hung through the spring and over the summer, and we invite them back to our first meeting in the school year here. And with us tonight, we have our art department with Mr. Stryker, Ms. Adams, and Mrs. Pranger. I'll invite them up front here. Or you want to take one at a time? That's fine. We'll start with high school art. Okay, Mr. Stryker, what is yours?
All right, thank you. Well, we had five high school students who had artworks selected to be hung up in the hallway, four of which were not able to make it tonight. Our first, Rose Buckaloo, who did a surrealist collage, is actually at college right now, so she'll get hers a little bit later. Andrew Randolph was also selected. He did an Old Sayings project. Sierra Spears did a two-point perspective house. And Jasmine Sweeney had an illustrated letter project that we're hanging up. Now, one lady who was able to make it tonight, Hannah Pyatt, if you could come up real quick. Hannah had an illustrated letter project of corn, which you can see up in the hallway as you guys exit today.
You have to stay up here because once all the students are recognized, you get to come around and shake all of our hands, so.
All right, I have four students, two of which are here. Katie Wells did a watercolor. Jackson Moody did a pop art project. I have Cassie Randall. She did a landscape. And Zoe Collins did an animal pencil drawing.
Okay, elementary art students, Mrs. Pranger.
Okay, Devin Duskins. It's been so long ago, I don't really know about you. Okay, Aziana Jefferson. Cameron Johns.
Well, I'm in soccer school, you're the bad.
Tell them you were winning when you left, right? They better keep it that way till you get back, right? Okay, Cameron Lewis.
Another Cameron.
Yeah, this is with a K, and he was with a C. And Brandon Taylor. I think he's here now. Okay, and that's it.
Okay, we'd ask that all the students that were recognized to report out to the front of the building there. Mr. Stone will be able to take a group shot. This is actually your opportunity to leave the board meeting, but you're welcome to come back if you want. But with the students being recognized, we'll get a group photo and get that posted on our website and Facebook tonight, so. Thank you for coming.
He's got to make sure they're still winning.
Oh, no, I wanted to sort of observe the role of.
Go get a win, okay.
Coordinator. I don't know.
Moving on. Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report dated August 31st, 2014? The move.
Second.
Good evening. I'll kind of bounce around a little bit for tonight. I'll start off, monthly results for August. We've got $244,000 brought in unexpectedly in deficits pending for the month. For your comparison, year over year, I prepared two spreadsheets. One is our net real estate taxes that show overall, we were up 5% for the year on our total net. General fund, proportion of our general fund taxes, we're up just over 2% for the year receipts. So it's positive. It's what we forecasted. We're seeing some positive news there. On the tax estimates, though, I think one thing that kind of jumped out at me, if you will, is kind of a red flag. We've heard all these signs of economies turning around, et cetera, et cetera. Want to temper that a little bit here locally. When I looked at our real estate delinquent taxes, year over year compared last year to this year's second half, I noticed an overall increase in the dollar change of 25%, or just over $102,000 more in delinquent taxes this year at the end of the second versus fiscal year 14, or 13, I'm sorry, for an overall increase, 25%. So even though we've seen an overall 2% net increase, there are continuing struggles locally with delinquent taxes. There was also an article I rarely include them, but Profit County now included that. The county treasurer is examining tax sales or tax certificate sales to kind of help offset some of those delinquent balances. I haven't had an opportunity to speak with them yet. I'm not sure what the rhyme or reason, if they're going to pick partials first, et cetera. I know they want to continue to work with local taxpayers, but overall, that should begin to vote favorably for the school district to try to recover some of those taxes faster. Right now, we do have approximately $512,000 in unpaid taxes outstanding to the district. So you can see, I mean, if we were able to recover that money all at once, it would obviously have a huge impact on our bottom line. So just wanted to point that trend out to you. It's nothing, yes, it's a fast percentage increase year over year, but we've had delinquencies before. County continues to work with those taxpayers who are struggling, but I just wanted you to be aware that that did increase substantially from last year. In regards to our House bill, 264 Energy Loan Project, we have submitted the application to the state for the Ohio Energy Loan Fund, which again, 1% mixed for 15 years. I have no earthly idea when that's going to be approved. We continue to move forward with it. We're going to start with the boiler project sometime in October, because that's kind of a have-to for us with the leak boiler situation there. Positive note, finally, after, I believe, 18 months or so, the solar project is now safely underway at the high school. They began moving in the frames for the arrays today, and talking with them, it's my understanding panels should begin to arrive tomorrow. We have a total of 2,002 panels that will be placed on the secondary buildings. And right now, they're telling me about eight weeks for completion of this. So we're targeting sometime around Thanksgiving. The size of that project, about a half a megawatt. That's technical. Don't ask me too much about that. Anticipating about a 30% savings the first year on electricity bill based on what they're going to charge us per kilowatt versus what we're paying with A and P. And again, we have a guarantee with this project, our rates that we pay for the kilowatts generated from those panels will never exceed what we would pay through A and P. Again, very small outlet. We spent a couple thousand dollars to have our attorney review the agreements, make sure everything was kosher and good for us. So very minimal expense to a pretty unique opportunity here in our backyard. With that, that will be my report.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Right, that 512 in delinquent taxes, that's all this year?
Yeah, that's through the second half real estate taxes, 2014 unpayable additional fiscal year.
I guess, how much is that collected?
How much is collected in taxes this year? On second half, total net was just over $2 million.
Okay.
But those delinquencies could go back. I don't get an aging report on those. I just get a total dollar.
Oh, okay, so they could be a couple, three, four years old?
It could be five years.
Okay, okay. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
We had athletic council meeting the first of the year with Mr. Rossen. Has our new athletic A.D. on September 22. Some of the highlights from the meeting, the softball scoreboard was to be installed.
By the end of this week.
By the end of this week, okay, so we're still holding out for that. We have five students whose pictures will go on the wall of fame. Macy Shears has already been taken, but it's not been presented to her yet. I don't know if they'll do that at maybe at the basketball awards at the end of basketball season, probably. The others, two track girls, Megan Nolan and Brittany Parcell, and Taryn Gaffrath is a swimmer in DJ dagger football. Those haven't been taken yet. We do have a new water fountain out at the tennis courts and water line, obviously, for the drinking fountain. And we received a nice thank you note from Tom Brandy that we read and shared, and he's hoping now to go into phase two, which would deal with some new bleachers and seating at the tennis courts, so look forward to that. Mr. Rossen's also working on trying to get some type of a tennis shed, storage shed out there. I had a nice report from Booster Club, Athletic Booster Club. It looks like they're looking at doing some different kinds of fundraising efforts. We're not going to have a reverse raffle this year. We've had that for several years now, but not going to do that venture this year. Right now, currently, I believe, we have the card, Red Men cards are being sold by several of the athletic groups and the band. He talked different things. He talked about a possible golf cart raffle, vinyl sign sale, kick for cash going on at the football games, which has been very successful so far. We're two for two with that. A possible casino night, just a lot of different ideas. So I was really happy to see that that group seems to be moving forward to do some different fundraising type of things. And then also just that, Mr. Schiefer pointed out to me that Mr. Stone has done a real good job on our websites, for website updating the athletic events and the results of those events. So if anybody to look at our school website under news and info to check on the latest scores and what's happening with those things. And had a great football game Friday night.
Amen. All right. Mr. Stone?
Sure. Oh, well, Mom meant to attach it to an email, and she didn't. So she will be here next month to read it.
The only thing I'd like to add on that, on today's, on today's agenda, you will see a regulation in support of Pioneer's upcoming replacement levy. That's a replacement levy combined, combined two 1970 levies of an original .85 mils each, and combined to a total of 1.7 mils. So we have typically around 60 kids from Bussar's attend Pioneer. They provide a great educational opportunity for our kids to, or not just a high school diploma, but also a certificated program. And we just ask for everybody's support of that renewal or replacement levy. Okay, thank you. Dr. Johnson, with student chief.
Superintendent Kimmel is going to be giving a report about the state report card, so I'm going to cede my time to you on the staff.
Well, this, our first meeting is this Friday, correct?
October 10.
October 10. It was my report. I'd like to welcome Ms. Hickman to the, to the board.
Hi, guys.
As the student representative.
Okay, the students are excited for their upcoming homecoming dance, and football season is in, and the Red Men are doing their best for our winning streak with our win Friday night against Crawford. The blood drive Tuesday was a success. Some students would like a school soccer team to be started. Students enjoy school lunch a lot better this year than last year. The pop machines with the diet pop is also a plus. The seniors are concerned about their grades, but we're super excited for graduation. And the student body also does not think that behavior is going to be an issue this year like last year. It wasn't too big of an issue.
We'd like to welcome Paige to the board. She will be covering the months of September, October, November. We will have a switch of student reps for this.
Greg Pyatt.
Greg will take December, January, February. And then our last representative is Taryn Ramsey, and Tanner will be here the last three months of school. So Dr. Burke came to us with a, typically, we look for two different student reps. This year, three expressed interest, and we talked to all three, and they all were represented very well. So we'll look forward to having Paige at least for the next three months.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions that come through the conversations that we have, for example, there's two items on discussion, items this afternoon, or this board agenda. One has to do with busing of Holy Trinity students, so it wants a trip that Mrs. French, Mrs. Rebon's here to speak about. If there's any discussion items that come up in the next three months that you want to give feedback from the students, we'd be more happy to entertain, entertain those thoughts. She's kind of representative of the whole student body.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I'm curious, what makes the lunch better?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a reason.
I like the pop machine. I think school lunch is kind of the same.
Yeah. I was just curious. Okay, well, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
We will move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Kimmel.
Well, I actually have three different things I want to talk to you tonight about. First one is the district report card, and Mr. Henderson, as in the past, has been given that task of presenting information. So in front of you is a hardbound copy of the annual academic report, and he also has a presentation. I'm going to turn the floor over to him. No, I think you may will read it.
So, Mr. Henderson, what is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Members of the board, I think it's this opportunity to do my best to give you an overview of the district report card, which is a very, it's a very dense report. And what I've submitted to you in the packet is the comprehensive report card broken down by the district, the school build, and each individual school building, elementary and secondary. Also in your packet is the OIP goals report, what OIP goals we met last school year, as well as some pertinent relative ACT data based on last year's graduating class. Those two items I will not be getting into today, but I would be willing to entertain any questions you may have about it. Most of my report this, this evening is going to focus on the general Bussar City School District Report Card, and try to explain some of the, what some of the indicators mean here. And where I pulled this information from, this is all accessible to anybody through the Ohio Department of Education website. And what you see here on this particular slide is the overall results for the different areas that are graded this year. Understand that this new report card is being phased in to its, to its final format in August of 2016. So we've added two new components this year, which we're going to talk about, which is a report on our Prepare for Success results, as well as a K3 literacy report. Now, the K3 literacy report is still being edited, and the final, our final overall grade will not be released until later, as some school districts around the state are updating their information. Apparently, there were some districts where data was inputted incorrectly in terms of kindergarten to third grade or reading results, and so that's why our K3 literacy grade isn't completed yet. But I'm going to talk about these individual six areas that you see here, starting with achievement. So, Mr. Kimmel, if you could. Thank you. So the achievement, the achievement indicator basically, basically reflects how our students, what percentage of our students met the 24 indicators that our district is rated on, all the way from third grade reading all the way up through graduation rate in the high school. This past school year, our district earned 10 out of 24 of those indicators, which reveal the performance, or excuse me, which is, would you give us a rating of, let's see, the achievement, Performance Index is a C, or overall achievement, 10 out of 24, unfortunately for this school year. I didn't include that on in the slide there. The achievement indicator, excuse me, is 41.7, 10 out of 24. That would be an F for that, for that particular score. For the Performance Index, which indicates how many students performed at each performance level, achievement level, advanced, accelerated, proficient, basic, limited, or untested, 77.1%. So there's a total possible score, a perfect score, so to speak, in Performance Index for a district is 120. We scored a 92.5 out of a possible 120, which is 77.1% of the possible points, which gave us a Performance Index score, score of C. And if you notice on the screenshot there, you can see slowly over the course of time since 2010, we've increased our Performance Index score as a district, which means we're having more students year by year perform in those advanced, accelerated, and proficient. In other words, they're moving from one performance level to the next year after year.
There's really, there's two measures, I think, that speak the most about how all of the students are doing. One is the Performance Index, the PI. If you see, it takes into account every level, every test that was given to the students in the district, starting with third grade reading all the way up through, through the OGT. And this is important because it doesn't just take into account how many kids were proficient or how many were not proficient, but it takes into account each levels, each student's level of what they scored. And as you can see, a proficient student gets a flat 1.0, but an accelerated student gets weighted points of 1.1, advanced gets a weighted of 1.2. But on the other end of it, if you don't achieve proficient rating, basic gets a less than 0.6, and limited 0.3. So that's important to see that growth being made, and having the PI, the highest suspended in the five, the last, the previous five years, I think is an indication that we're moving, we're becoming stronger in the Performance Index of the students. So that's one of the two measures. That one I'll point out when we get to the piece of the, the value added, so.
Right, so if you turn to the next slide, Kimmel, and the gifted student indicator, which will come up again when we talk about the progress report or value added. For the district, our value added score for gifted students is, was a C, which in the value added, value added measures, our students' performance in fourth through eighth grade reading and math, for those students that are identified gifted in reading, or math, or superior cognitive, which means they're then identified gifted in all, in all subject areas. And as you can see, all of our students, gifted students performed no lower than proficient in all the, on all the tests and subject areas. And again, our gifted students, we want to move them from one performance level to the next highest performance level. That's the work that our, that our teachers do, do locally every day. Okay, and the progress measure, this is, this is what's known as value added as well. As you can see, for our district, this is our strength for this particular report card here. This is what we've done. This is really what we hang our hat on, what we do very well in this district. As you can see, our overall value added grade for our district was an A. Gifted students, again, as referenced on the previous slide, is C. Students in the lowest 20% achievement, that's compared to the kids that performed the, well, the bottom 20% in our, in our school district, their value added from the previous year's score was a B. And our students with disabilities value added score was an A, which again, is a testament to the work that our intervention specialists do in partnership with our general education teachers district-wide. And then what will be coming next year in August of 2015 is a high school value added grade. This coming spring, our high school teachers from a certain end of year, end of course exams, will be doing linkage of roster verification that our fourth through eighth grade reading and math teachers have been doing for years. Those teachers will be doing the same roster verification process and will receive a value added grade in the fall of 2015. If you look on the right-hand side of the screen there, it's easy to see that those areas that are darkest green are those areas where we had the highest value added growth, where those students in those subgroups and those grade levels grew more than two years. You know, the expectation is we want our kids to make a year's growth. When these dark green areas, those kids grew more than two years. And in some cases, if you look, for example, eighth grade mathematics, the increase was 5.15. The light green, fourth grade reading, that's over a year's growth, but less than two years' growth. Those areas that are red, our students that didn't quite make the mark and fell back a little bit, and that's where we're doing a lot of focusing our efforts to make sure that we were able to move those kids as they progress this year. Those yellow and, those yellow areas are also indicating years growth. And the orange area there in the fourth grade, all tests indicates below a year's growth, and again, another area where we were focusing our energies. But the fact that that, you know, simply put, the fact that that graph there represents, has a lot of dark green areas, reflects in our value added progress. And again, it's a testament to the work that our teachers did and that they do every day. If you can turn there. Thank you. Gap closing measure, this is where things get a little more complicated. Gap closing, we received an F as a district, 42.1%. And rather than try to explain to you in words what that means, if you, if you notice the graphs up there, there are five different colored graphs indicating the different subgroups in our district, which happen to be, well, all students are white students, economically disadvantaged, students on IEPs, and in some grade levels are multiracial students. And those are the performance levels of those students. The bar graphs represent this year's achievement levels. Well, the annual measure objective is that red vertical line, as you can see. For this year, the students in those subgroups, we needed 84.9% of our students in all subgroups to, to be proficient on reading or math. Or if it was graduation rate, 78.2%, which is the far right graph there. And you can see, we met that goal, the annual measure objective last year. But what we're, what we're expected to do is close the achievement gap, meaning these subgroups, these populations of students that are not meeting the proficiency standard, not only have to meet the proficiency standard, but go beyond the expected, which is now 80%. And so that's, so that's the, that's the complicated piece here. And what we have to do, if we cannot get them to meet that 84% in reading or 80.5% in mathematics, we have to make sure they grow enough in terms of the number of students proficient from year to year, that that, that growth is smaller than the gap between the achievement level and the AMO. Next year, or this current school year that we're working in, we have our AMO goal is 86.4% of all of our students, including our special ed population, have to pass the reading test. 82.5% have to pass the math test, and our graduation rate, which is a year look back, our class of 2014 graduation rate for four years has to be 80.5%. So that's the, this is where we kind of get, you know, the value added progress in our district is outstanding. And here's where, where we look at, and maybe we need to do, maybe it's not enough. Maybe the value added work that we're doing when we compare to the annual measure objective is even is even more of an uphill battle than we realize. And so, this is where a lot of our energies are directed, this is where we're partnering with our state support team out of Mansfield to work with the individual teachers involved with our teacher-based teams and our building leadership teams to really work on closing this achievement gap. And it's an uphill battle, but one that we're tackling head-on. And if you can, and the graduation rate, 81.2 percent. Four-year graduation rate indicator for those of the students that entered the ninth grade in 2010 and graduated by 2013, 81.2 percent of our class met that goal. That's a D. Five-year graduation rate, 86.8 percent. And those are students that entered ninth grade in 2009 and graduated by 2013. And again, as we mentioned, 78 percent, 78.2 percent was the annual measure objective for that. K-3 literacy grade, this is a new indicator this year. This measures on-track, students that are on track in reading or not on track in reading, and their progress from one year to the next. So, if you look down the left-hand column there where it says, "In our district," last year, or two years ago, 84 kindergarten students were not on track. By the end of first grade, 44 percent of those 84 students were on track. First grade to second grade, 35 kids were not on track, 17.1 percent improved to on track by second grade. Fifty-second grade students were on track last year, 16 percent of those improved to on track third grade. And third grade students, 56 percent of those were not on track. 48.2 percent of those non-on-track students passed the third grade.
Well, those measures come from the diagnostics test that's given in the first three weeks of school each year. So, it doesn't really take into account that, you know, you talked about the summer slide a little bit, you know, a lot of our students experience a backwards slide over the summer. So, we, you know, we work really hard when the kids are in our building and reading every day. Unfortunately, that reading doesn't continue in the summer like we'd like to see it happen. So, we're excited if a kid simply came into school at the same level they left school in spring. That means they must have been reading quite a bit, so this is an interesting piece there.
And we use a pretty rigorous screener compared to state diagnostics or some other district diagnostics. At the beginning of the year, we used the DRA test, which really provides a true picture of where the kids' reading skills are and breaks it down by several individual standards. To put this another way, there were 225 kids, K through three, last year that were not on track. Seventy-five of those 225 were on track by the end of their school year, by the end of the next grade level, which is a 33.3 percent. Again, they're working through this calculation because there's some other districts across the state that don't have accurate data updated in EMIS. So, over the next couple of weeks, we'll get an update on this particular indicator. And then, if you turn to the next slide, this is the Prepare for Success, and this is just a report this year. And basically, what it talks about is what percentage of our 2013 class, graduating class, took the ACT? How many of them took the ACT and entered college remediation free by meeting certain score thresholds on the ACT? Same thing with SAT, what percentage of our graduating class took the SAT? And how many of those scored remediation-free scores on the SAT? What's our population of students that have the honors diploma, or earned an industry-recognized credential for Pioneer? How many of those students participated in AP classes? And how many of that, what percentage of that graduating class scored an exam score three or better on the AP test that they took? And how many of those, what percentage of that graduating class took the dual enrollment credits? There's no component grade for this year, for this until 2016. And so, this is, as Mr. Kimball mentioned earlier, I had a meeting with some community leaders and business leaders this morning, talking about a project that's going to be taking place here in Ucire City, that really kind of speaks to the important work that needs to go in and prepare our graduating seniors for success after high school, whether that be college, or whether that be into a industry or trade, or two-year college. Really provides a focus for us at Ucire City School, and I feel very good about the work that we're doing in this district to address this Prepare for Success component grade. And then, on the last slide, it just compares and breaks it down, the individual overall component grades for the two buildings. The top line being the elementary school, and you can see across the achievement, their Performance Index, the indicators met, the progress component, the gap closing, annual measure objective, graduation range, which doesn't apply, and a blank K-3 literacy grade because that, again, that component facility we're working on. And then, Ucire Secondary School, you can see their individual component grades. So, that's a lot of information on the report card that's still being built and phased into its final version, so to speak, in August of 2016. I'll be glad to answer any questions or clarify any points you'd like to make about the report card.
I appreciate, Mr. Henderson, your work on this. I, you know, I had a few conversations with Dr. Johnson this morning at our meeting, and it's important that the proper perspectives given on this, most of it's a one-shot test of our students. Some of the measures measure what we did last year to this year, so it does measure the growth, which I think is important to take a look at. But it's also important to know that we educate kids 180 days a year, and while this is a piece of what we do, it's not necessarily defines us as a district. And so, it's something that we analyze, we study, we make plans for adjustments on our strengths and try to correct our weaknesses. But it isn't something that I think we want to totally lean on as the only determinant factor of how we're doing, performing as a district, so. But we do, we do take the report very seriously. There are lots of areas that I think that we should be proud of, and there's obviously areas that we know that we need to continue to work on. So, open up for any comments or discussion or dialogue on any of the pieces of the report card.
I noticed seventh through seventh grade, it seems like students struggle compared to the state average in some of the districts of math. Any insight into that?
We, you know, we adopted a new curriculum last year, and we haven't really seen the full impact of that yet. A lot of the work, a lot of the work at the elementary building, in fact, all of the grade levels are writing, the teachers are writing their SLO. One of them is reflecting mathematics achievement in their, for their individual groups of students. I think some of the transition, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions and confusions about the Common Core standards and how those relate to the curriculum that we're using, and everything's aligned. I think it's just a matter of, it's a matter of targeting what are the large, what are the large, the most important standards, or power standards, or big rocks, or whatever term you want to use, at each grade level, and making sure that as those kids move up from grade level to grade level, that there's that vertical alignment, that you know when a kid leaves third grade, they're going to be strong with this particular set of skills that sets them up to be successful in fourth grade, likewise, fourth, and fifth, and sixth. And that's the, that's the conversations that are going on from grade level within the teacher teams. We, you know, it's really, it's really a matter of supporting the teachers with the curriculum, the textbook that we have, and making sure that they're focusing on, they're focusing on the things that are high impact from one grade level to the next, rather than trying to cover everything. And that's, and that's a challenge, to be honest with you.
So, we've kind of been implementing Common Core the last couple of years, maybe even the curriculum we adopted reflects that, but this test doesn't necessarily...
No, this, and this test is duly aligned. You know, it's, up until, up until, well, this year now, it's fully aligned with Common Core. Up to this point, it's been duly aligned with the old Ohio standards and the Common Core, so the teachers have to struggle with, okay, where's that, where do I strike that balance? And so, that's where, and that's where we get into what are the power standards, what are the, what are the big ideas that are important?
So, some of them may be just an alignment issue, and over time, it'll get better aligned, or the test will get better aligned with what we do, or are doing.
Right, right. And again, like Mr. Kimball said, it's a one-time snapshot. They'll take that test one day, and that paints the whole picture, which is not necessarily true picture. Thank you.
Second piece I'd like to speak about tonight is last spring, when we had our staff focus group meetings, several, what I consider, you know, issues came out of talking to staff on it, and a lot of it in circumstantial communications. And we went into the focus of what can we do to talk about our open enrollment numbers, and it kind of got into a broader picture. And a lot, a lot of the people in this room attended one or several of those focus group meetings. I'm happy to say that we've actually had some follow-through on several of the ideas or suggestions that have come up, and want to compliment Mr. Stone and his work in the public relations side of things, because while a lot of the work was being done, the staff and according to staff did feel that they were aware of the work that was being done. So, we started the weekly update that takes a look back at what the releases were, went out the week before. It's a simple email. If you want to read about the full story, you can hit on one of the links, but for example, today's release went out, there was five stories that were put out last week. And our goal is to put out one positive news story per day. And so, I have to say that we met that goal this week. And we're going to continue to meet that goal. We've got probably 15-story ideas in the bin right now. So, we don't want to flood the news media. We want to thank Crawford County Now for posting all of the stories that we send their way. So, kudos to the radio station, and I want to bet they're doing online. So, another piece that come out of that was, you know, is the positive news stories always make it to all of our families, our families in Ucires. We know we sent out the smoke signals to the whole community one time a year in August, but is that the only printed newsletter we put out? So, in front of you today is a sample of two newsletters, one for the secondary building, one for the elementary. And Mr. Stone put this together, so I'd ask him to spend a few minutes talking about what we're going to be doing here to get some more positive information in different formats to our parents.
Sure. First of all, thank you to the staff and to you folks as board members who did attend those meetings with Mr. Kimball to give us this feedback. Really, at the end of the day, the work that has gone into this newsletter is done in terms of building the template. That was the hard work. Now, it's just repurposing and reusing stories that we've already sent out. So, what you'll notice is, you know, we've got a welcome back and then two stories on the backside of each newsletter. And that is basically what folks are going to see when this goes home. Plus, you know, as you can see, full-color students are pictures of the students. I'm randomly picking news stories that we are, you know, releases that we've sent out. There's really, there's really no rhyme or reason to picking them.
We're really open to suggestions. We don't want to bog down with a bunch of information, but we just want to continually keep the good news about the district in front of our parents. And this is a way, low cost, for about 10 cents per copy, we're able to put this out, and we're not going to mail it home. We're going to put it in the kids' take-home folders at the elementary and do the best we can to secondary building to hope that those make it home. But, you know, right now, we're targeting once a month. We will probably structure it to be a quarterly type of newsletter. From the standpoint that we're going to look to push this out in different venues, that's yet to be released. We're trying some things in-house, but that's really where we're trying to just continually look at ways to get information to our community in the most cost-efficient way that we can.
So, well done. So, these appear on the district website somewhere as well?
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll post those up wherever we have the newsroom. I'll create a new page and link these up there.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Nobody to address this. All right. So, we will move on to the Personnel Certified Staff. President Murdochs, members of the board, it's my recommendation to you provide items A through E under the Personnel Certified Staff section of the agenda. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. President Murdochs, members of the board, it's my recommendation to you provide items A through F under the Personnel Classifieds Staff section of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Swat her out?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Yes. Move on to the business. President Murdochs, members of the board, it's my recommendation to you provide items A through H under the Business section of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please? Support? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I think we have a couple of discussion items. I'd ask that maybe we start with item B, so that in respect of two young ladies scheduled tonight, so. First, item B, if we could jump to that, is the show choir overnight proposal. Dr. Burke?
I don't know the folks that are experts.
You don't have to, you don't have to. Maybe just describe just generally what you're proposing, because this is something I think new that we haven't done for a while, if ever, for the show choir.
That's great. Mr. Kimball and Thor, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. I'm proposing a trip for the Players Show Choir. We're looking at working with music festivals, which is a very popular, well-respected company. They have different music competitions around the country that they host in major cities as close to home as Cincinnati and as far away as the West Coast. So, the trip we're proposing for the Players is to New York City. The trip would be kind of twofold. One, of course, we would like to offer the opportunity for our students to perform in a competitive setting, which is new for the Players. And then, the second part of that is, of course, to offer our students in the district the opportunity to sort of get outside of Crawford County and see what else is out there. While we're there, as you'll see in your information packet, they'll have the opportunity to attend a Broadway musical. We're also looking at the opportunity to visit the Statue of Liberty, Ground Zero, the Empire State Building. The specific details of the itinerary aren't set in stone quite yet. We're waiting, of course, for the approval here tonight, and then, moving forward, we would have more specific details. One thing I will let you know that is, has changed from the packet that you have in front of you, is that I think in there I had stated something about inviting the parents to come as chaperones after speaking with Dr. Burke. We've made the decision to primarily focus on taking staff members and board-approved staff from the district to, as chaperones on the trip. If there are any further questions as you're perusing, please feel free to let me know and I'll answer them the best way that I can. Oh, yes, thank you. You'll also notice in there that we are proposing this trip alongside Colonel Crawford Vision Show Choir. Caitlin Foreman, the director there, this is her first trip, as she's only been there on, this is her now, her second year, and this is my first trip. So, we thought kind of joining courses and experiences and having ideas from both sets of administration would really help, and of course, it's going to help our students save money by traveling with other additional, larger groups.
Right now, the proposal is not to use any school district funds, this would be all the funds that...
That is correct.
That you've raised, that kids have raised. And how many students would be impacted by this trip?
Twenty-eight high school students.
Which probably could be one.
I'm definitely in favor of this opportunity. Many of our kids have not had an opportunity to travel out of state, much less to New York City at the venue. So, in our band, in the past, has had an opportunity to march at some of the larger parades through the years, and they've always talked for years about their experiences. Some of our students groups, Mr.
Some of our students groups, Mr. Barker, who's here, would take some kids through the foreign language club, and so this is an excellent opportunity for the students. I would agree. Typically, what would happen is, as a discussion item, we would put it back in the board agenda for approval at the October meeting. Is there any timelines as far as commitments built from the district's standpoint?
There's somewhat is. Colonel Crawford's board has already approved it, and so we're looking at moving forward to begin parent meetings. The sooner that we can begin meeting with the parents would be helpful so that they're aware of the financial commitment.
If you're not in opposition, I'd ask maybe you have a resolution tonight approving the trip. I wouldn't have much time planning. Could I get a motion for that?
Certainly.
Support? Any other discussion?
Yes, buyers fundraising tickets from me. No.
Is that part of the resolution?
Yes, yes. Ms. Rebon.
I was gonna say, I went, I was chaperone, and it had to be the late eighties, the Players went to Washington DC. As a matter of fact, Matt Hoover, one of our teachers, was a member of Players', and it was an awesome experience for the kids. It was, it was great. So this is a, a super opportunity, and I'm very excited that Mrs. French and Mrs. Rebon are taking on this challenge, and I think that's great for our kids.
How much school would they miss?
I kind of outlined that in the packet, that is an item for discussion. We would be leaving on a Friday morning around 6:00 AM, so they would miss Friday. The only other issue is they have us returning Sunday evening around midnight, and so school on Monday, I'm not sure how we, what we can do for them. I just don't know how many of them would be...
We let them come in at 7:45.
No, I'll be here. I'll be there.
We can work around those details, so. I think we need a roll call. Swat her out?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
You got permission of the board to continue planning?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to say it last time, but you're welcome to have me dismissed. Part of your discussion here tonight, with the closing of Holy Trinity last spring, opened the door up for, Holy Trinity combined with Gannett St. Joe's, with students from Visarus being invited to attend school at Gannett St. Joe's, we ended up having eight students who are Visarus City School District students that are attending Gannett St. Joe's. When we first were notified of the merger of the, of the parishes and the intent for Holy Trinity to close the building behind Visarus, we were also notified that Holy Trinity had planned on purchasing a bus, which they did, and had planned on having a driver, drive the students from Visarus to Gannett. The bus in the law, we found out a week before school started, did not pass inspection. And the two drivers, one being Father John and one being Chris Hallman, who were going through the proper training pieces, did not, had not completed their training. So they had no driver, no bus. So we were approached about what we could do in the meantime, and I agreed temporarily to transport them, and by law, required to transport them. Any student choosing to go to a private, local school within 30 minutes of Visarus, it is the public schools' responsibility to transport them. So we hired, we used one of our substitute bus drivers, and we were picking the kids up at Holy Trinity in the morning. Parents' responsibility to give them to Holy Trinity, and we take them to Gannett St. Joe's, bring them back from Gannett St. Joe's nap, and drop them off at Holy Trinity. So we've been doing that with a substitute bus driver, and the church has been going well. We have six to eight kids that ride religiously. So we were requested, you know, as far as whether, whether the school district would be interested in busing students full-time. And I did not feel comfortable with the financial position that we're in to commit to basically a full-time route driver and transporting the students. Soon as I moved to make this a full-time route, we would be looking at, you know, a four-hour per day, 20 hours, 20 hours per week position, but that, with that becomes full benefits. So you're talking, you know, anywhere between $25,000 expenditure just on the personnel side of it to bus eight students. Plus, the, the gas and the wear and tear on the bus would be quite costly to transport this, that limited number of students. The law does have a provision that a Board of Education can pass a resolution that deems two things. First, it deems that we are, that these students are eligible for, for transportation, but the second thing would be to deem it as being impractical to transport these students. And the reasons being, in our case, financial, plus it's tough to find bus drivers personnel-wise, and the depleted fleet of buses, you know. So there's really kind of three factors that a board could consider, at least our board could consider, passing that type of resolution. I've been upfront with Holy Trinity from the very beginning. They understand it's not our intent to, to transport these students the entire year. Their goal is still to get their bus in operational shape. Their goal is still to have, in fact, the two drivers are being, taking their driver's tests on October 14th. So they just, they just, in fact, just gave you an update this afternoon as to where they were with becoming certified. I would still recommend that we hire those two drivers under our sub-list in case their bus does break down, that we could help them out by using one of our spare buses in a temporary position to help, help transport them. But what's in front of you tonight is a, is a resolution that would send notification to the State Board of Education, that the board has deemed these students to be eligible, but impractical to transport them. And it would send notification to the parents of that board resolution and give the parents an opportunity to request what's, what's called a payment in lieu of. Okay? A payment in lieu of transportation would consist of a dollar amount being offered to these families. Last year, that dollar amount was $250 per student, so we had, we would have roughly $200, $2,000 expended for the eight students, six families, eight students. And that was a dollar amount last year. The state recalculates that every year and puts a memo out in the middle of May, and the payment is made after that. So it could fluctuate. Two years ago, it was slightly over $240 per student, raised about 10 bucks last year. The board has the right to offer the minimum allotment payment, so steep, but can go all the way up to the average, which is the maximum amount. The maximum amount last year was $948, $950 per student. So the board does have that flexibility between those $2 amounts to, to offer what's called a payment in lieu of transportation. So once again, what's in front of you tonight is a discussion item to open up the floor to have any questions that you guys may have. It's my recommendation that we do not get into a long-term transportation agreement for, for the eight students, that we do offer this, this payment in lieu of, excuse me. If the parents turn down the, the dollar amount offered, it goes to the State Board of Education to have a hearing to determine the impractic, impractic, impractical piece of transporting them and whether it was a fair amount, dollar amount that was, was offered to the families. So that's what we are asked of today. Like I said, it's still Holy Trinity's plan to bus the students using their bus and their driver, but they just don't have that in place. And I told them that I would give them plenty of time to have, have it in place before we're not going to pass a resolution tonight and tell them tomorrow the bus isn't running. So bottom line is, we're still responsible, and this is just a way, because of the finances of the district, to hopefully not expend as much money as what we, what we have to by hiring a full-time bus driver.
And is this something that you'd have to do every year?
Yes. Yep. And if there was any other family that sought this type of transportation, I would say, to be transported, let's say, St. Berners in New Washington, we would need to do the same process again. It's anybody who lives within, within 30 minutes, not 30 miles, 30 minutes of, of their, their doorstep to the doorstep of the other school that they want to attend. We were approached in the summer by families that wanted to be transported to St. Peters'. And they're 30, about 31 miles, but when you take bus drive time, it's, it's well over the 30 minutes. So I declined it and told them they were welcome to appeal it to the state and chose not to appeal. So that's where things are at right now. Any discussion or questions?
So the resolution is to, to deem it impractical and offer X amount of dollars of monetary...
Correct.
...to reimburse this?
So, so in doing that, if we pursue that, which I'm in favor of, I think it's fair and reasonable, the suggestion that we do, we also settling then on a dollar amount this time?
The recommendation from our legal attorneys to, to offer this statement.
Okay.
So if, if it is the, I mean, at this point, we have the communications ready, based on the board acting on this resolution tonight, to send it to the State Board of Education and sending to the parents. If it is the, 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 any of the board that will go next month to approve that, that's fine. We can readjust the letters and the dates and the notes, but in my opinion, at this point, I don't see any value in prolonging the, the...
And even though Holy Trinity's going to offer a bus, they're under no obligation to do that.
That's correct.
But I do like the idea of hiring them as sub-drivers, it'd be good helping.
And return, maybe they'll take a trip or two. We're very excited to see that, as willing to offer them, or hire them as a sub-bus driver and willing to use one of our backup buses if theirs were to break down. They also wanted Dan to maintenance their bus. Why did I do that harm? But that's where things stand today, and so I guess if there's no other questions or comments, I would ask for a resolution to, to forward with the, with this resolution. Could I get a motion for the approval of that resolution?
So I'm on it.
Sorry.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Any communications? Mr. Green, he had a letter that he had sent to the Board of Education that I was shared with the Athletic, our Athletic Council, but I'd like for you to share that with the group.
Absolutely. Dear Mr. Kimmel and the Visarus Board of Education, it is with great pleasure that I would like to thank you for helping with the installation of the handicap-compliant water fountain at the tennis courts. This addition could not have been done without the help of the board, Mr. Kimmel, the maintenance staff of the Visarus City Schools, Quinn Brothers, Kin Brothers, the Community Foundation for Crawford County, and all the people who donated to my father's memorial fund. For all that everyone did to make this addition possible, I thank you one and all. It is my intent to move on to phase two of the project with the installation of new bleachers and seating. This should greatly improve the experience for parents and participants and other people watching tennis matches at Visarus. I wish I could do much more, but I am sure the tennis community and high school players will appreciate the improvements we can get completed, and I'm pretty sure my father would approve of these changes being done in his name. Thanks again, Thomas D. Green.
All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Swat her out?
Yes.
Yes. Hi.